Evening, everybody. I am here live in Otter Creek. As proofies. How you all doing tonight? I'm gonna go inside, get a seat, and catch the girls in a minute.
Hi, Linda. It's nice to finally meet you.
I'm supposed to get your therapy on my knee and my hip right now. And they said if you put this in the room, it doesn't pay my rent.
Doing fine yourself? That's true.
Who has the white card? I'll see her later. Can I get you to move the car? Well, you're too close by. I just want to ask you.
The bar is fifteen.
Bar one, just thirty-five.
How do you do? What a morning. Playing the guitar. Disgusting.
Thank you. Yeah. Nothing good. Okay. Yeah. Just a picture. You should. If you go down. We're down. I know we're about that. Well, you. I jerk off my chest. I have a roof. Yeah. Stay for this?
Hope you said. I think I've got more reason there. Have you looked at the little log? Where you both are sleeping out. If they have a pocket there. Or we can, uh, all the. Uh, we thought of all they did there. It was really hard work. But I will say that, thank you. What's the board? Yeah. Okay. There. Everybody. So. Love it.
They see how.
I'll look later. Say it. So I'm not sure. That, that's okay. This is a. This is what I started. It's the only thing that's going. Yeah. Working the dice.
Yes. We really want that. Yes. I'm going to call them all. My. It's really all right. It's awesome. We're going to break the.
Yeah.
And we need trust. Yes.
I live in the first flight fifteen forty-five.
No, that's okay. We will try to fix it. And yeah.
There you go.
Come on.
The.
Yeah. It's one of them. Show me that. Good one.
Uh, we got pools. We got one in the third. And then we got four that are steam butt. Or flip. Or I love that. And then we got tanks. Big tubs. Yeah.
Sorry.
Well. So we have two or three. We have top. We got push pot brand. We got all the interiors. I've got all the internet. Like it all. You know, it's a bit off. It was a ten buck.
No. It can have that.
You want to sell them?
No.
I'm trying to win.
And now.
You have a whole lot of money. To the man. The bear one. We got the. Fourteen sixteen. We got. Two ten. We've read. Five. We got all kinds of colors. Green, black, red, yellow. We got fainted tails. We got. All the way. Right now, we must spend money. Oh.
We think it's pretty. Yeah.
No. It's a very. Right. And uh. It's pretty hard. Just sound. Uh. Over that. Four new ones. And so.
Yeah. I said, well, we don't have a little stick. So you know, for me. I said, I think you're just. Yes. Yeah. Thank you. I wish you. I wish I didn't have all the titties. Or excuse me. Yes. I think I'll come to the matter. So. You don't. Someone. I want them all. You know, this is. Do you mean? You think? This is the same. I was. I was. And then this is like. It's like. Right. You're talking about that. You're just doing anything. Well. Mm-hmm. Anyway. Next step is to make up. She was like. I think I heard you get done with the meeting. That's. Does it work? Yeah.
Yeah. See the.
Because you have one of your. Yes. Talk to some time.
Nobody has a thing.
Talk. Let's talk. Then some. And we watch it. Speaking. So it's the last thing. Okay. Okay. We know. I'm sorry. We. It's all scary. And then. It's not. And we go. We have the coverage. We have the chips. And we're giving you maximum.
Yeah. Very strong. So there's not. Yeah. The job. This gets.
So the boss. My. See.
So. That's all. Yeah. Other than that.
Hey, Duma. For the. The food.
You sure? Sure.
Yeah. Don't worry about it. See, it's just a. Uh, I'm sorry. Blah. Blah. People. Um. You got. So then. The whole. This day is on the. No, no. That is extra. That's what I'm doing.
Yeah. I would just. I'm not going to. I mean.
Um. Some of us know what we've got.
I think she's on the.
Not for the service. So not to.
Okay. That's why they're in. Hello. I bet you thought. Um, I think.
These are those old.
This is raining bad.
Hey, bud. It's working. Yep. It's great. Selectable. Okay.
Oh. I can hear you.
Yeah. Can you hear it? That would be. Really. Really awesome, dude.
Thank you.
More, more time?
Laura Leonard.
Oh, wow. Really nice, man.
I guess. It's like. Uh-huh. Okay. No problem. I'm a bad person. He's. He's looking at.
Okay.
There's the. The town justice. For. Scott.
Steve, this has been some nights where I sleep right after. Block. I think I was asleep for ten o'clock last night. You know. Of it. Four thirty, five o'clock. Oh, yeah. Mine is one. I heard my dog and my cat. Turned up for me. What are you doing? Take it down. Uh-huh.
Okay. And the calling word. What did we do? She did a five. Of the highest stakes of America. To you. All of which stands.
My nation.
The God.
And the original. What ever to you. Just.
Yeah. I approve. Do you mind when you want to set up a comment? We saw a corner here. Information on contact information. For the blocks. And uh. For the, uh, public comments tonight. Mr. Mike. Is for public comment only. Questions will be handed into the office. And this is our. So. We have permission for the. Right. All papers on. Aye. Prove of minutes.
I see.
Favors on line. Aye. So. Home business. We got a. Contract. We're going to take. This is a. Building inspected services. Which are friendly looking. And. On the city. And then actually couple of places. City as opposed. Which really. Being trusted. Because they're. Really hope. Really have been innovative. With the last large box back. We said since. Based to the CEOs. In the past, we talked to. I believe this is contract has been approved by Megan.
It's the addition of the, uh, things that have been put in state. From. Years.
Okay. So, um. That being the case, if you're ready. Can go. Both of these.
Yeah. I read it. Just said. Percentage.
So that's the case. We still have the circumstances. On the new business.
Any question?
Oh, you should get on.
Yeah. Hopefully you approve this contract. Oh, maybe there's.
All right. Fair as I know. Aye. Some notes. Voice. The details from Megan. You may follow. Orbits. Do we have a minimum ordinance? The ordinance number is. Two zero two four. That is zero two. And then just read this in the pipe.
Just type.
Uh, we don't.
Ordinance. Twenty twenty-four dash two. And ordinance. Of the town. Modern group are giving the town charter. And the town covenant ordinance regarding elections. Changing the date of announcement. A date of election. Designation of seats available and all final dates. Adopting election procedures by ordinance. We pull in our election procedures. Resolution and ordinance and the statute and effective dates.
Do you all favor? Aye. Oh, my emotion. This is the. This is the one for the. Pretty follow. If you settle. Case found. We say. That's only on. Six months. This is the. People are. Jim. On favor of this. Aye. See. All right. Christmas light contest. We have to be announced in December's meeting. Do we? This. Do we kill it? Last year. And you prefer to do it.
Right. Yes. And that's really good. And it wasn't. They wanted to do it. But we. Talked about the big thing. So. 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 A couple of women have been wanting to do it. We can bash that out. And just. Get some. Something to write down. Get out. And then. Search your. Our eighty bucks. Get that good. And just put it in the box. And we'll get it. See you in that December's meeting. Um, that might rule their. Thirty days. Picture. On the course. My life. I'm definitely not.
So the. Like the first people that they come here to get an hour. Or like. We want that. To the four. They'll.
Yeah. They'll get off. When we need problems. And then that might be. Don't be anybody. They want. And uh. Please. Probably the thoughts. Most of this can happen. See the.
That's okay. You can hear it. The first one. That's a piece of. One. All right. Okay. So, um. By the way, what's the good deal about this?
I don't know. This. That that mentioned. It's going to be a. Take it out.
Oh, try. This is not my. Fair as I know. The animal's single. Okay, so we got a contract. For major years. So this is very. Um. For our. Major process for the new work. Then. Some process. You know. Um, we work. Um. So we. We already received it. We already kind of accepted. Um. So we just got. Hold on. Just break a motion. People sign the contract. Is that? Contract's ready? So we just got, hold on, just break a motion, we'll sign the contract, is that, contract's ready to sign?
Yeah, the contract is ready to sign.
That's good. First step, if we're gonna do this, we're placing the contract beginning. We're waiting, see us for a second, second person. All papers? This is, this is some, still step back to. Now, just, just go back to local, we do local here, so we can, like, well, share. Grass is here, air, water is here, water is here, lighting here. Lenders here, and Megan is on the phone. So that makes us, first thing, so to say, this is, we have a good form of law. The, um. So that's a look up, so we got, so we're gonna go to resolution of public comments. This is a. You can go. So basically, probably convinced by everybody's ready, and we've been wishing for past. Alright, so the, uh, sorry, what's next, if we're gonna be after this? You just could.
The town of moderate group resolution twenty twenty four dash O S that made a resolution for the town of moderate group Florida. Adopting public participation guidelines and the forum rules and providing an effective.
So you got a permission to accept it? Second, second. All papers on?
Uh.
I have the motion.
Right, my question. My question, so, no, I'm in the motion, second.
And a copy will be mailed to everyone.
Just that, on your district.
Um, I want to give everybody a stat on the fiber optic. Um, we are in the cozy, there's a number of the states for our proper optic. Um, they're pulling it now, and we're supposed to be in December, by the end of December, we're supposed to be. Whoever's gonna get it can actually go live with it. So if you haven't already enrolled in part electric. Um, I can give you, when I send you out your copy of this resolution. Um, I can also, I'll give the information as well, and then if you're in contact, go ahead and, um, apply. Apply for it. And that way they'll know who's gonna come in, who's not. And, but as far as I am from, what I can tell from C F C C, we, they're pulling it back, so. We're supposed, our country's supposed to be, um, up and running by the end of December. See, um, if you get into festival, we, that'd be pretty good.
Festival, we were, we were getting, oh, and started seeking out sponsors. Got a few good responses, no one submitted back. Sponsorship, yeah, there's two, it's on the table talking. I'm trying to go see some more. If you know of any agencies that would be interested in it, there's a, we're gonna make up some sheets. That's another one, did not, yeah, not, but be great. Basically, sponsorships are so much money, they want, they want to get banners, and you learn the line, and you put a pin in. About twenty-four, we can't get one across the street, it's just too complicated, the high so, the wording, instead of the power. That's it. You two, right. This will get us, in the top, we'll get the banners, and we got a, for sure, we can pass out anything, basically, so. This will have pages, we'll connect up with the different figures, and basically, the different, things for sponsors. There, and it's yard sign, out in the streets for advertising festivals, we have a lot of over. I'll get some of those, different, different levels, sponsors get different rounds. All sponsors get. So. So we found some more contacts, and we'll be sent to them. Like to get them last, last visit ever to hold on, all you can come back, some of these people don't have time to open that. If you do, you skip the whole, we send this along, just, just, trying to get that counter and vendors. Got a lot of good spots, and people, they paid it more. There's a lot feedback. And then. Okay. The, uh. Uh, W three C, does anybody, anything else on the festival? The W three C update, um. It doesn't, what am I gonna be able to do that, just facing the same, because the deal came up, the W three C for the museum, just wanted one, the three of us. Put together, but, and kind of. Speaking out to find more information tomorrow's meeting, we'll find out whether it's. Familiar, so you can log the one, and find us, and sort of. Uh, situation, so that's, we're there for stuff. That's why I checked. Okay. Up there. Maybe this, this, a lot of stuff. I have a lot of units. Which is a really tough, that's got, what, channels grew up, they're, still, there's still some, three hops, cameras coming here. They've done, flirt with the own, to the partner. Right. Anything specific you want, uh, as a need or?
Just on the scene. And still, South Hurry Avenue and Third Street should be a three-way stop sign. That's the end again, yet, South Hurry Avenue and Third Street going east, both have a right way. And both of them today, took.
You know, uh, right now, someone's stopping, you come to track, for.
Right. But, South Hurry Avenue and Third Street, okay. This is a stop sign, great.
Right. Definitely, you can track on, on the back. Need to stop. Off of that, we're going out. Off that camp, see what they're gonna do, something besides, and what they suggest. Thank you. Alright, so, focus.
I can actually contact somebody. One, we're, I, I talked to somebody, it's something you're still talking, um, about that. You know, I was, it's, it's put through your channel, but.
Sure, that, every.
Yes, I have. But I can. That'd be great, we could get some like that.
Oh, yeah, there's, but that won't, there's. This thing's short. Yeah, but then, what they're telling us is, that's a side street, this is the main street. That's a main street, there is, but you're coming off of twenty seven, it's got through, twenty four. But. Yeah, do that. You think? The result, talk about the way, the, the, the community.
It's complex and.
So there's, was there anything that's on the building that, other than that? So we got the topic, so maybe there's nothing there, water. We got a national. The, we've gone to, we're doing all stuff. Still, we, well, this, this mean thought, this is, since we got. Kind of came in with the power program. To use. And, and we can, did. Uh, truly, I stand up, I understand for those who are this, because I truly think that the sky and the bus, what he needs to do, is help us. Just trying to brush their plot in there. Let us develop expenses, make it work. And we can't get all, none of us work, because it was all, and it was the customer part. And we had to deal all that, so that, we. Have, okay, okay, systems, and then all the works like foot bases. So we can actually work their filters, required concentration. And, uh, so we, we finally get, we didn't have the loans, we can't step, what we had, uh, I think, by the way, my stuff. But yeah. I think you said a thousand hours, but it wasn't a thousand hours, it was. Building. Okay, here's the problem. Is, and we're ready. Me, me and how, in the company, system, system is pretty private, me and how. People. It's, it's not. So we are, we got a good team, we're. Up there, really wanting to go forward in the mood. Checks. So, there's the bacteria living around, washes through, it's a wash, it's. Okay. That's all, as I understand, I'm gonna spend. My. He was. They, this, that, the races of ten men. And burn all ten money. And long races, costs that, wait, each time, it means, it breaks. We have the capital, I kind of feel that they're kind of sorry about this. I think we, we can fight this, this don't cost money, sometimes, fight the same, we just can die out for years. Really serious, just, you know. Or we can negotiate with them, they have come, they got on to, so, uh, cost, we, it's eight thousand dollars. Uh, about, maybe, two to three years, this is, this sits still, but then, they're, not people, it's very, very, very. So. This is, this is costly. And ideally, they were just, just, ideally, require, I'll give them a best study, this, uh. We have, all the. This is the one, and that, especially between that. I, Chris, last year, before the year before, because the work still wasn't fixed. And I'm assuming it will be fixed, and we gotta get that, it's fixed. So I feel okay, the work right still. It's hit, I was gonna try to issue, just to, just have a pay on this cost, that's cheaper than in here, right? It's faster, it's all right. It's just. For pleasure. If anyone agrees, I will issue that. Shoot. Anyways. Which could talk a lot more later, though, those are all some of the most. Times, when you're just running to, have to, the war, this is gonna drag back. The, I mean, it's traced the time, it's, it's all these things. Subtlety. So I'm gonna wish you to pursue that, pursue that, we're told. That the town can, we'll be working on it, funding, asking payback, of these payments, I'm working on the back to town. It's just fully backed, so, there is a source, but. Let's start to, so it's, it's not like it's free money. There's something that we had some time. This, this is, you see. That's it, it's worth, it's, it's, steps. So there was time for us to pick that up.
Overlooking that, like, one of the eight thousand, that's what they're offering, we're trying to.
Looking for questions to trust in the leadership at the town, and to carry the.
I don't have any question, all that.
All papers?
Aye.
I'm really, really, um, I'm, I'm, I'm learning how this is going. If y'all want to stay in touch with it, like, if they were sending it.
We need to, um, there's one thing I forgot to mention, I forgot that man. Need to work, that call for Megan, that the person that is doing our website, did not do it enough, finished. Did not make all our things, have they had an effort, or unbadged, but he has recommended someone. The monthly fee is no more than what we're paying now, to where the Google, or the, and often. But there's going to be a initial fee, between two and four thousand dollars, to make everything that we want on our website, eighty eight percent. We initially put everything up, and when we can do that, she went and brought the budget, we can post anything, most of eighty eight percent. So we had to take everything down. We got it, and we got me that we do it reasonably low, uh, it's turned several others, uh, in this pattern. But, like, we, right now, we got Dixie County, we got Dixie County, it's got, um, Ben's Friends. There's two of them, one's got, right now, so, um, that's seventy thousand dollars, I'm gonna, for maintenance after that, but they, they give them, and they did this.